Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee Home Meeting. Today is Monday, October 3rd, 2022. It's 5 o'clock. Thank you all for being here. We have a lot of items on our agenda this evening, so we'll just jump right in. The first two items are related, so let's have our city administrator, Decker Plain, and city attorney, Chris Curran, talk us through items to appear number 6, 7, 8, and 9. Gentlemen, thank you. However you want to start, you have the floor.
Your honor, may I just say that the, we're going to go over the agreements again for questions. Chris will talk about the changes that we made since the last meeting, either based on your input or what we perceive to be your input. And then some of those we changed, some of the language we left as is. So Chris will go over those changes. We did circulate the last draft to Brad, and Brad is here. But I think we can answer your questions at that point. And then the companion resolution, which will be the third item, is the movement towards the landing final design. So we'll talk to you a little bit about that as well. But Chris, I think, can take the agreement, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you, your honor, and Decker. And I will just go through the few changes that we did have. The two agreements, the agreement for the sale of real estate and the shared use agreement, were both initially in the council packet when we set these public hearings two weeks ago. And then, of course, the updated versions were put in this most recent packet. So I will just summarize the few changes. I'll start with the sale agreement for the Life Fitness Center property. The one change that we had is one that we did mention as well at the last meeting, which is on the post-closing covenants of the buyer relating to the ongoing provision of indoor tennis. We changed the number of courts that would have to be offered at a new, potential new facility, from two courts to three courts. That was my mistake initially, and so we've changed that. And then on the shared use agreement, which relates to the construction and operation of a new aquatic facility, there are three changes, well, four. I did have a typo in Section 5A, which I've changed. But then also, to clarify a couple of issues, Section 7C, we updated the hours as well as days of expected hours of operation of the facility. So that's Section 7C. We also changed Section 9B, which relates to preventative maintenance. We just clarified that the parties would work together to create and prepare a schedule for mechanical and electrical systems. So we added the words "and electrical" to just make that clarification, that there are electrical systems that will need to be on the preventative maintenance schedule. We also did clarify the Section 9E, which relates to the distinction between repair or replacement, which, as we discussed last time, relate to which party is ultimately responsible for repairs, which would be the YMCA, or the CapEx or replacement obligations, which would be the city. And we have these two guidelines that will help the parties to determine which bucket it would fall under. These are general guidelines that really will be part of the ability for the parties to work together to figure out which bucket it will fit in. And so these two tests will be used. And so we still have the "and" language, but I think it's more in keeping with the fact that these are general guidelines that will both inform the decision as to which bucket it would fall under. So those were the changes. We did, of course, go through the agreement in pretty great detail at the last meeting, but if there are any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Barry Minor, just those things will continue to pop up if we keep looking. Any other questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Curran. Okay, yes.
Thank you, your honor. I have comments, no questions for Chris, but I do have comments on the projects.
Okay, that's... Let's go through our presentation tonight. Certainly, you'll have an opportunity tomorrow when council deliberates, and you also have an opportunity to respond after a public hearing, should you have comments at that point in time, if that's all right with you.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Decker, anything else on these first two items, operational items to appear 6, 7, and 8, 9?
Only that staff recommends that you hold the public hearing tomorrow night, your honor, and we would recommend approval of the agreements.
Okay. Any other questions on those items to appear? We've had plenty of time to ask those questions and get through the agreement. All right, seeing none, let's move to the Amendment 1 for the landing. And for that, we welcome our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt, and our engineer, Brent Morlock. I know Brent's been doing some work there. Brent, if you want to get us started.
Sure. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you.
This would be a resolution to formally contract with RDG Planning and Design for full design of both the landing and the permanent frozen, I should say, splash landing and permanent frozen landing. That will cover schematic design, design development, construction documents, bid services, all of our typical professional services. Also does have some time dedicated for construction administration as well. Knowing that, you know, our budget is tight where we're at, we're going to try to take care of all the construction administration, both in-house and using RDG and their subconsultants, as opposed to having to go out and hire a construction manager. That is our intent right now. Obviously, we're incredibly early in the process. But we do feel with the scope of the project that between our engineering inspectors and the time that the consultants could put towards the project, that we can handle that all together. So the total cost that we're looking at is approximately $1.4 million for the full design, and that equates to a little over 6% of the total project costs. And just for comparison's sake, professional services for our federal aid projects, our roadway projects, run on the range of close to 24% total. So that, you know, you have a very large project here, so the professional services are a higher dollar amount, but considerably less when you take into account comparisons of our federal aid jobs.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Brent?
I would also add, your honor, that Brad and his team, also because they are more pool experts than we are, will also be involved in some of that, at least from an advisory perspective, to help us. So we think we're going to have a good set of eyes in our own eyes and then our colleagues' eyes as well, so.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. Just a point of, to remove all doubt, my understanding, reading the agreement, that the cost of RDG, the design cost, is part of the construction cost.
So...
Or the construction budget.
So the answer to that is yes. But the solution to that, as we said in the last meeting, is we're capping ourselves today at the $6 million each. And since we haven't bid the project yet, we don't know what that number is, but RDG's money is on top of that. And we'll either have to value engineer it down or find additional capital, which, as you know, we're doing right now. And we're pretty confident that there'll be some additional capital dollars and/or the provision of splitting the difference between us at that point to accommodate how we bring that into the fold of whatever that bid is. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, yes.
Scott, Webster.
Just for clarification, number 2 in the amendment, I assume the second section of that is actually the subtotal for the ice rink, not the subtotal for Splash?
Yes, yeah, I think they copied that down. I see that. Yes.
Because that section would be ours.
Yeah, correct. The $305,000 is for the permanent ice rink. That will be all city cost.
That's city cost there. So it's really 1.1 for the pool.
Yeah, it goes ice, ice, and then turns to splash.
Yes. It says ice, ice, but, I mean...
Dun, 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 dun.
Clarifying wise.
That is a song. Well, somebody caught me.
Nice.
I'm here for you.
I've been around you too much.
It's been a long week, my friend. Any other questions then for Brent? Before we move on, thank you, Brent. Yes, I'm sorry, Bill, please.
Brent, what are we assuming are going to be reimbursable costs?
So reimbursable, there'll be some travel time because all three consultants, or I should say, two of the three consultants that are on RDG's team are from out of town. So RDG would just be mileage. There are going to be no overnights. They'll try to limit their visits to a key point in time during construction, probably building construction and then some key parts to the pool and landscape. There will be probably an overnight or two for the pool consultant and potentially the ice rink consultant because they both are six to seven hours drive time. And then beyond that, just plotting, which we don't anticipate much. So they, generally speaking, that $25,000, I think, is very high. Generally speaking, we've been in the $3,000 to $5,000 with them on previous projects. Forest Grove Park, for example, there was very little.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Let's move on to our 657A, 1 through A10. Changes here in the Iowa Code.
Did you get motion to put that on? I didn't.
These are all on items to appear.
Okay, thank you. Never mind.
If that's all right with you.
You're good, your thanks.
Sometimes I forget I do have everything put on, but since they're going to appear, we'll do that for consent.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks for catching me.
Hey, I'm here for you. Chris, talk to me a little bit about what you want to do with 657A. We'll recall a discussion about this during planning last year.
Yes, thank you, your honor. That's right. We do have a tool that we have been moving toward using relating to abandoned or unsafe buildings. And this is a pretty strong tool for cities to use to deal with some of those more problematic buildings in our city. And there's been a recent change to the Iowa Code, which requires the city that wants to utilize the process of 657A, which allows us to go directly to district court to deal with some of these properties, to either have a receiver appointed to get the more comprehensive, you know, demolition, as an example, to get that done, or potentially for the city to take title to some of these properties. So it's a powerful tool. It requires, with a recent change to Iowa law, the city passed an ordinance saying that the 657A is applicable in our city. So it's a purely procedural step that we want to have in place prior to filing some 657A actions, which we are poised to file. And so I would recommend that the city council approve this ordinance, allowing us to use 657A. And I would also recommend, if council so desires, that we waive the second and third readings. It's a purely procedural step. So I'm okay with that move, if, of course, all of you are.
That gives you the opportunity, then, to come back to us with these projects that you want to use this tool to complete.
Correct, although it wouldn't...
We'll get the projects.
Well, it wouldn't require...
We'll be notified.
Yeah, it doesn't require council action for us to take those steps in court.
Right. But we'll know that you're headed that direction.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
All right. Your honor, we've had our code enforcement meetings that Mark and his team run, along with the fire chief and the police chief and others from planning. And we've got, for sure, one candidate property that we would love to take immediately, and we're ready to do that. We've had a couple others that we think now have finally gotten some action, and we think we probably won't go with those. But we had as many as three properties immediately available. And this one, for sure, that we thought we had resolution on is, we don't. And so that's also one of the reasons that I think we'd like to have you waive it so that we can move relatively quickly on that particular property.
And we'll see if anybody comes to speak on it tomorrow. And if council's willing to do so, we'll do it tomorrow. All right, let's move to our next item on the agenda. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the city of Bettendorf and RDG for the update of our comp plan. For that, we recognize our community development director, Mark Hunt, who has joined us by Zoom on a little bit under the weather, and our senior planner, Greg Beck, who's here running the controls. Gentlemen, thank you. You have the floor.
Thanks, your honor. And Greg, thanks for helping out tonight. It's going to be a little bit of a team effort here. I know Greg's going to kind of run the slides, so I don't know if I'll be able to see those or not, but I've got a copy here. So, yep, perfect. And then I also have Jeremy Pease and Chief Building Officials also in the audience, too.
Jeremy, thank you very much for being here. Sorry. I saw you come in.
Yep, he's been with all these projects as well.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yep, thanks, your honor. So let's just talk about something we're really excited about in the planning department, and that's updating our Conference of Land Use Plan. We have a really excellent plan. Thanks, Greg. It's only five years old, but so much has happened in Bettendorf in the last five, six years that it's timely, it's time to update it. And this is a timely point to do so. We have new census data available. We've had a lot of development. And so last year, in 2021, 2022, this council made it a top priority as part of their strategic planning process. They funded the plan up to $125,000. And we were able to put an RFP out back in May. We got four good responses back. We put an interview committee together. That interview committee included Decker, Lisa Brown, and Bill Connor as well, and members for P&amp;Z and staff, mainly department heads. We came to the recommendation of going back with RDG because they had so much experience, and they were really responsive to the bid that we put out. And I'll get a little bit more into that here in a little bit. Let me talk about the scope of services. The way RDG is presenting this is it's really an update to the existing plan. So instead of throwing out our plan and starting anew, they really want to help us update it and change it, fix some of the problems that we've had because there's been a couple. But there's a lot of things we really like about this plan, and they're going to help us, you know, enhance those. They break their projects down into these five big tasks, and they're a little bit ambiguous. But I did put a couple points on the screen there that you can see under each of those big tasks. Mayor, I think you'll be really excited about Task 2 because that's where they get the demographic information, and they go out and count the population. And I think they're going to come up with a number of about 40,000.
Forty thousand and one is all I need, brother.
Yeah, I think that's going to happen. We'll be able to put it in black and white. A little bit of inside joke there. But what's really in the details here, I think, are some of these special studies we're going to get. So without any cost to the city, we've negotiated a contract that includes four subarea studies, two new ones. And those will be probably done under, oh, Task 4, if you will, the major chapters. But they'll do a downtown subarea study. We had that last time. They'll do a Middle Road I-80 subarea study. That's new. We've got some interchange coming. I overheard something there. I just want to pause if I need to.
Okay, good.
I'll continue. And then Magnolia Hawthorne area, this is a part of town we spend a lot of time talking about in committees and at council. We want to try and help this area. So we're going to do a subarea study there. And then Cumberland Square will remain a subarea as well. So we'll do some special studies in that area. This is a big undertaking, even though we have a contract that would provide these services, staff and council members and P&amp;Z and Board of Adjustment are all going to be involved along the way. Lots of meetings, lots of dialogue. I'll go back up to Task 1, engagement. They're going to be able to do a lot of this electronically now. One thing we've learned from COVID is how to communicate better electronically. That actually brings our prices down because they don't have to have so many in-person trips. And that's how we're able to stay within your 125 budget that you gave us, is to do a lot of electronic engagement, dashboards and things like that that you've seen at other projects that we've done across the city. That's really the highlights. Greg, you can go to the next slide. I'm really excited about this contract. I'm excited about the scope of services. We negotiated in two additional subarea studies, as I mentioned, at no additional cost. I'm really confident about the 40,001 number, mayor. So I would recommend, when we vote tomorrow, that you do approve this contract. But I'd be happy to answer your questions. Greg and Jeremy, if I've missed anything, please chime in.
Greg or Jeremy, anything? Bill, Lisa, you guys were... Thank you for your work. You were involved. Anything you want to add? Go ahead.
I know when we were talking about it, I know so much work had been done before as far as this being a tenure thing. At the conference that we went to last week, I had gone to a comprehensive workshop, and it was interesting how many municipalities are now during the redoing theirs every five years. So I think our timing's good, but I just found that interesting.
You, Bill?
No, I think, by setting down on all the interviews, RDG has a thorough understanding of where we're at. And they even admitted to some things that they thought might be a problem for us, that they knew that we need to come in and change. When we did this originally five years ago, we kind of didn't have a blueprint. We kind of just, right? Took input and put it together. And I think it's a good time, after using it for five years and knowing what works and what doesn't, to redo it. And I think RDG is the company that we should let do that.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Jerry? Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, honor. At the conference, I also ran into Corey Scott from RDG. I talked to him, and he was really excited about coming down and doing this. And he'd already identified some areas that he thought they could improve on compared to the current study we've got, or current plan we've got. And I did have one question regarding the annexation map. And I talked to Mark Hunt today, and Mark clarified that for me, that I think that they, that Mark has a good plan on how to do that.
Yeah, that's a good question. Actually, I think I will mention that because that was a good question, Jerry. There's a subconsultant that's working with RDG to do an annexation cost-benefit analysis for us so that they could price out the cost of that study. We did give them a generalized annexation area map. Now, that's just for the purpose of getting the contract underway and setting a cost for that study area. That by no means indicates what the council is choosing as their annexation area or if they're even going to change it at all. So I just, you know, we put a map together that was included in the packet. If you saw that, that again, that's not a policy statement. That was just used for pricing, if you will. And if we, as a city, choose to change our annexation area and boundaries and want to change the specific area of that study a little bit, we can do that. No, we're not obligated to anything that was provided in the packet as being a policy decision in any way.
Thank you, sir. Lisa?
I was going to say, you know, I keep hearing the word improve, which is, we're looking at the one, you know, previously. But the community has changed and grown so much in the last five years since the last one was done. So this is really just looking, relooking at what has happened in the last five years and then pulling in some additional information like Mark's talking. So this is an opportunity. So not really a reflection as far as a need for improvement. It's opportunities, so.
Yeah.
Just wanted to point that out.
Great. Anything else on this topic? All right, gentlemen. Thank you very much for the update, and we'll take a look at that tomorrow night as item number 11. We move to our consent agenda items. The first is for our community development director, Mark Hunt. So stay on the line there, Mark. This is a site development plan for lots 2 and 3. FG80 holding second.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. This will be a project I'm sure you're all familiar with, this piece of ground. In fact, we just talked about, this will be one of the special area studies that will be on our comprehensive plan. So Kevin Kilner has a development now. I'm going to call on the west side of, or sorry, the east side of TBK. A lot's going to be happening here. We have a site development plan for a very specific piece of it. So everything you see in green there is not what's going to be covered. We're only going to talk about that one southwest corner today. Basically, the golf operation and the additional baseball operation. We'll go to the next slide. A little background, we have some future land use and zoning here. Everything that's being proposed is congruent with the both future land use and zoning. We did need some special use permits for the golf operation specifically and the baseball operation specifically. Those have been provided. Go ahead, next slide. So as we drill down in your mind's eye, A and B would have been in just that southeast corner east corner of the map that we were just looking at. So A is the golf facility and B is the baseball facility. What you'll see with those baseball diamonds is that every diamond actually has two baseball diamonds on it. And so you have eight diamonds total. And they can be kind of resized for the size of player. And then the A spot is a driving range. It's a golf facility that uses Topgolf technology. It's a driving range, kind of a game style driving range. It can be played at night, it can be played during the day as well. And that's, that's a use that is new to the quantity and probably new to the region. We're really excited to have. As I did mention, both uses required, especially use permit, and they were granted. Want to talk a little bit more about some parking concerns here and how we manage those. So we have the authority through our Board of Adjustment to give a parking exception. And that's specific language from our code. And what that means is at certain scales, our parking guidelines become enormous. They don't scale out very well. And when you have a development of this size with so much shared parking, if you were to actually run the numbers and try and create the certain amount of parking spaces, you would basically become with one whole paved lot, which is what none of us desire. And really isn't necessary because we know that the users here at this facility will be users of all the other facilities and sharing parking spaces in between them. So the parking exception code allows us to take it to B O A, have them analyze it and approve the parking to be less than what would be calculated mathematically, but still extremely sufficient, in my opinion. And the board felt that way too. I just want to make you aware that there's going to be plenty of parking at this facility once it's developed. Next slide, please. We've talked a lot about lights. I'm not going to pretend to be a lighting engineer here, but I will share with you that the bottom of that slide shows some lengths and distances and candle foot. And we're showing less than a half of a candle foot of lighting still within the golf bay. So you're not getting any light overshadowing or over lighting past the end of the golf bay. Remember, these lights are not pole mounted. They're only mounted on the building. So they're much lower than we may be additionally anticipated. They're mounted on the building. They're pointed downward and they don't shine past the length of the driving range. Next slide, please. Lots of green sprays, lots of plantings, lots of grass. I mean, they're athletic fields. The fields themselves will probably be turf in the driving range as well, but the space around them. Lots of trees surrounding. We'll have trees at the end of the driving range. And we'll also have parking lot trees as well. We're going to meet our tree count by a plus one factor. And we'll think we'll have a good look in sight as far as landscaping goes. Next slide, please. We had a positive staff review, same from the Board of Adjustment on the issues that they had to consider and for P and Z Commission as well. Glad to answer your questions. We would recommend approval tomorrow.
Any questions?
And then Greg and Jeremy, I'm sure if I missed something, jump in, please.
Yeah, Greg, Jeremy, anything? Okay, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You mentioned lights. Are the ballfields lit? Do they have lights on the ballfields?
They do, yes.
Okay, and I assume, and I assume the parking lot does too.
Yep.
And then could you refresh my memory, please? Competition Drive there, which butts the parking. If I recall, that had sidewalks on both sides of the street, correct?
Mark, I can answer that for you.
Yeah, thank you. I can't remember the details there.
Yes, we, for this entire expansion, Jerry, we made sure to really put an emphasis on pedestrian connectivity. So there's actually eight-foot rec trails on either side of competition. And they have some dedicated internal wide pathways as well.
Okay, good. Thank you. Because I was concerned about, you know, I see people walking back and forth between the facilities and on the other side too.
Yeah, obviously pending funding for it. You know, our hope is to be able to build that pedestrian bridge, which would really create a safe pathway through there.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda as Consent Item G.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up as Consent G. Let's move to H. This is a preliminary plat of Legacy Corner submitted by Rob Fick, Middle Road Developers L C. Ryan Fix in the audience tonight. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Yep, thanks, Your Honor. I'll do my best to kind of work through this. My voice is starting to go a little bit, so I apologize for that. So this is a preliminary plat. We're going to show a little bit more on our preliminary plat than we do on a final plat. But really, we're talking about the subdivision of land here. And so there's a few related cases. There is a potential gas station with car wash that has come through our Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Commission. The site plan for that is not being brought forward yet, but we are talking about a subdivision of land that would include that. So I just want to make that clear. So you see the green highlighted area? We're going to be looking at a subdivision of that entire area. A very small piece of that or a portion of that would potentially be used for a gas station with car wash. We can go to the next slide. Just a little background, we've got some zoning and future land use in place. We are congruent with all factors. No rezonings are required. We did need a special use permit for a larger sized gas station, increased in pumps. That was provided. And we can go to the next slide. And a little more history here. Sometimes when we have these developments that have sat vacant for a while, it's interesting to look back and see what we were planning. And we've been pretty consistent as a city since nineteen eighty-four in planning for commercial use at this corner. And you can see that with those slides there and the green highlighting that Greg is pointing out. Next slide, please. So on the preliminary plat, really just four lots here. The lot that's kind of centered along the, along the road, Middle Road there, North-South Road. That will be a location likely for a gas station, possibly with car wash. The surrounding lots don't have uses defined yet. Well, one was an outlaw, so it won't be used. There is one just outlawed that won't be developed. I would note there's no connectivity to Fifty-Fifth Court or to Addison Drive. And that is also a condition provided by staff in our recommendation to P and Z and to council that that not be provided. We want to preserve the neighborhood environment in those areas. And so all connectivity will come off of Middle Road and Fifty-third. And we have some plans for that that we can, we can address in the future as this development does occur. I would also note that the entire area is bermed, nearly the entire area is bermed along Addison and Fifty-Fifth Avenue Court. Rather large berm, probably, I'm going to say at least six foot tall. From the road, it's above, it's above my head. I'm six foot tall. And so that does provide some already, not required, but does naturally provide some screening for a potential development in the future. If we go to the next slide. And then that berm, not easy to really observe the height of the berm here. But again, you're in a city vehicle and the height is higher than the city vehicle. Next slide. So we had a positive staff review. We did add a couple of conditions about access that I mentioned. And we do want some internal sidewalks along the private drives so that we do have some connectivity. We're next to a neighborhood here. We know people are going to walk back and forth. We want to try and preserve that neighborhood walkability, which is so important for the health of our citizens and just good planning. We did have a positive recognition from P and Z as well, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions here? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's quite a difference in altitude between Middle Road and the other side of the rec trail. Probably ten or twelve feet, I don't know. So is this gas station going to sit up on top of this mound? And there's a road going down to Middle Road? Or how is that, is it going to be, earth moved away and it's going to be lower? What's the?
Mark, I guess I'll take that one for you, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead.
We don't have any construction plans for this yet, as it's just preliminary plat. But looking at the grading where the gas station, the lot that it's going to be constructed on is quite further south than I think the area you're thinking of, Greg. So once you get past, kind of, there's a big retention structure there, a big big concrete box basically that has a cage on top. If you can see that everywhere north of there, yeah, the rec trail sits quite a bit lower. But then south of there, you're pretty much at grade. So this will be sitting, you know, probably, it looks two to four feet above middle is what I would say. Because it's actually further south than you'd realize.
Further north, you mean?
Well, further south than the area that sits so much lower. So the rec trail comes up.
Right at the roundabout, it's the highest.
Okay, so yeah, if you're referring to the roundabout, yes, it's further north there. But it's further south of where the rec trail sits below the road.
Correct. So we don't know if they're going to...
I would imagine when they get to the site plans for those corners, yeah, they'll have to bring them down.
Okay. So that's to be continued.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Scott Webster.
Where is that concrete structure? Is that north of this?
Yes.
Yes. So the outlot that they're creating is actually that little bit of detention from the Haley Heights additions that actually never got platted with the previous ones. I think it was always intended when this would come, they would finish out that outlot to fully contain it.
It just backs up quite a bit there.
And that will be, yes, it does.
Over the trail.
That, if you remember, the piece of ground that we bought just north of there, we're going to have to find a way to fund that. But we do have some preliminary designs to expand that detention. Just a lot of trucking, unfortunately, is basically what you're doing. You're cutting all that dirt out and hauling it somewhere. I think the estimate that I saw, I think it's a little high, but it was north of eight hundred thousand dollars. And it's all trucking essentially, so. We know we want to do something with that piece of ground. Maybe it's a combination that we'll have to find a way to, you know, use some of our labor or trucking. But, you know, if it's constant like that, it's almost certainly going to have to be contracted out. And we may just have to wait until we see some better pricing.
And then last question, does that no access, or the access being the way it is, does that go on the plat so it becomes a plat note? So people?
Correct. That'll be a final plat note.
In the future? So it becomes a plat note? So then it stays there? That's always a concern because sometimes it goes off. I mean, on the plat itself, I...
Yeah, we always put those restrictions on there.
With that on there, I have no problem with that.
Any other questions? Yeah, Greg?
I'm sorry, I had two and I didn't ask the second one. The, we bought land north of that for retention.
Correct.
And the plan was, I believe, to bring the water down and then under Middle Road.
It crosses there now, so that large retention structure that we were talking about.
Is this going to mess up our ability to get the water?
No. So this is all south of that, that area, all this entire development is. So there's the two large culverts that cross under Middle. And they are just north of the proposed access here.
Okay.
So they won't be modifying that at all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
About other questions? Yeah, back to Scott. Greg, get ready. We're going to do this volley back and forth.
I got one more.
I'm just, because council knows, but some of the citizens there, I mean, the process is different because we understand it, that this isn't the site development plan. This is the plat, basically laying it out. It's not talking about berms and buffers at this time. We talked a little bit about it. But that will come at the site development plan, which will probably come in a couple of weeks or two weeks or four weeks. So people know this is not the time that we discuss the buffering of this particular lot. So they don't think that we're not talking about that or issuing that. It's...
If I could add to that, Scott, it's probably going to be a month or two at this point because we've actually already received everything for the October planning and zoning, and they did not submit.
Okay.
So at the earliest, we'd be November planning and zoning and probably December council.
I just don't want the citizens to think that we're not having any discussion on that because they're obviously, there's feelings there from them. And we'll try to work through the best we can to do what we can.
And we might want to tomorrow, Your Honor. I suspect there will be people coming here tomorrow for the meeting thinking that this is a time to comment on those kinds of items. So we'll have to explain that this is the preliminary plat, not the site plan. And there's still another opportunity to talk about that at the site plan. But I'm certain there'll be people from the neighborhood based on the amount of people that were at the Board of Adjustment that quite don't understand the process.
Further questions on this item? Greg, you're going to ruin it. It's done?
I've had my time, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's Consent Agenda as Item H.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, FG eighty, change order number one. Engineer Brent Marlock, Public Works Director Brian Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, if you remember with the development agreement that we have for the FG eighty project, we are responsible for constructing the extension of Competition Drive from Middle to Forest Grove on the east side there. We are also responsible for all the public sanitary sewer and storm sewer. We're trying to fast track this as quickly as we can, which I think you've seen with the couple of contracts that we've already pushed through. So first contract we got out was all the mainline sewer. It was a dedicated sewer contract. Pricing was great. We knew contractors were looking for some end of season work. So that project is well underway. We then just bid and was just awarded last cycle the actual paving of Competition Drive. While we were, that in between the two, those two projects as we were finishing design on Competition, there was a run of storm sewer that we looked at and it just made a lot more sense to try to change order it into the FG eighty site because we really needed it done as soon as possible. It was going to be critical path items. And every one of these contracts that we've talked to, contractors are waiting on pipe. They're waiting on structures two, three, four times as long as they used to. And then when we went back and looked at the pricing that we got comparatively between the two projects, the FG eighty project having been just a pipe project was significantly lower dollar values. So what we're doing is simply moving a piece that we originally intended to put with Competition that we would have been responsible for either way into the FG eighty project utilizing that pricing. So there is no extra work or anything that's gone wrong on the FG eighty. We're just shifting components between two contracts to leverage the best pricing.
And saving money.
Yeah, I think we'll save somewhere between sixty-five to a hundred thousand dollars based off the pricing that we saw on the FG eighty.
Perfect. Questions for Brett? We can certainly understand that logic. All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda as Consent Item E.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's look at the remaining Consent Agenda items, please. If there's any particular item a particular council person would like to discuss or ask questions about, now is the time. Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question for Brent on this, on Item C. When we get that in, will we be able to sync these up with the speed limit? So we don't have the problem that we have with the light that was installed at the fitness center was never in sync. And we have people running across the road and everything else down there.
Downtown.
So that will get built into our Middle Road corridor. So we have a Middle Road corridor that's all timed out. We've got a Devil's Glen one. This will help quite a bit, especially with the inability to have any gapping in there right now. It'll take a little bit of time to work through the thinking. We know an initial layout, but we always have to watch them for the first couple of months and see how traffic actually is and make changes. But yes, it will be.
Thank you.
Bill, I have a question on the same Consent Item C. Was very surprised to see the cost changes in a year's time from similar projects we've done. Not so much material. I understand that everybody's raising material costs. Labor, two and a half times higher.
Yeah, if you saw the two...
Been one heck of a negotiation for the United Brothers of Electrical Workers this past contract.
Especially if you look at the other bid, you know, Davenport Electric was the low bidder, just over, or just under ninety thousand. And then Tri-City, I think clearly, in my opinion, just didn't want the work and threw a price at it, but three hundred and some thousand dollars for installation only. That's two and a half times what we paid for materials.
Yeah. And then on top of that, we've done some widening on Twenty-Ninth. So that cost has rolled into the cost of the intersection. Seems like CDB Underground was there for weeks.
They were doing a lot of utility relocates. Thankfully, they were not on our dime. That was items that were in the right of way.
Okay.
But yeah, in general, we, as I put in that letter, I wanted to take a good long look at the formerly a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand that we were always budgeting for a new intersection is basically right at about three hundred thousand. I talked to Davenport. They're doing one, while they're doing one as part of, they're going to be taking one over as part of the Sophie Foster development. And they saw the same thing. They're waiting on materials. I think they're actually putting up wood poles temporarily just to go. But they're going to be north of three hundred thousand as well.
Well, hopefully, we don't have any new intersections contemplated because the only way to cut prices is to quit buying the services.
Yeah, and I think we've been doing a good job. The, I think we're probably the only ones in the area that do what we do, where we actually source all the materials ourselves and just contract out the installation. Saves us a lot of money, but still having a problem.
Yeah, well.
Brent is...
Can't affect that here, I guess.
Yep. Is the work being done at Eighteenth and Middle by that same contract? And are they putting in fiber?
So there's actually two projects going on there. One was a MetroNet relocation to accommodate us at Twenty-Ninth and Middle, all done under essentially our franchise agreements with them, so at no cost. We have had in the last month almost thirty thousand dollars in right-of-way permits for a new fiber provider. Not much detail. I think it's probably a 5G backbone if I had to guess. But they're following a lot of the same paths that MetroNet came in.
You know, the one thing, and maybe we can talk offline, but the one, I've noticed they have a whole lot of lane closure for work that's being done in the actual right-of-way. I'm not sure they need that whole. It's a mess at Eighteenth and Middle.
I'll have Sean Glancy get up there and take a look. We told them to minimize them when they could, but...
They're shutting that whole north lane off.
It appears it's done now, but it's cleared.
Was it cleared this morning? It wasn't this morning?
But I think mid-morning.
Yeah, okay. I mean, they had a whole weekend. And I didn't see much work there, but I wondered who it was because I knew MetroNet was already done.
Yeah, I think it's Unite Private Networks is who's on the permit. I think it's a 5G backbone.
There's not much more room in that right-of-way based on everything that's been shoved in there.
Not much anywhere else.
And they got to be born through water lines and everything else. All right. Sorry, Your Honor.
Jerry? There is good news, and that is traffic circles don't need these three hundred thousand dollar streetlights or traffic lights.
That's true. A lot of people won't call this brilliant yet. All right, any other questions on this item? Any other questions on any other Consent Agenda items? All right, then I'd entertain a motion to pass all Consent Agenda items for consideration tomorrow night.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will take up all of our Consent Agenda items as written on Consent tomorrow night. Are there any items to be added by council? All right, I don't have any items to be added. Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We will see you...